And again, once, as we do always, let's think about our troops serving our country. Thank you. Have a seat. Welcome to the Special Village Board Meeting of Trustees, March 9, 2020. First item on the agenda is payment of attorneys' invoices, special counsel for the months of December, January, and February. How would the board like to proceed?
Is it correct that Terry Rice's bill is in total 12, 12, 9? Anyone?
Yes.
Yeah. And Keenan Bean's bill in total is? Anyone have that information?
I believe it was over 80 some odd thousand.
Eighty-two, one twenty-five quarters.
It seems like there's a very big discrepancy between the two bills. And I'm not enough of an expert to analyze legal bills. So I asked a friend of mine, someone I went to high school with, who is currently a corporate attorney for a pharmaceutical company. And I asked him, you know, would you look at these and tell me if they look legit to you? And he looked at them. He wouldn't put his name to it because he wasn't charging anything. But he said the Terry Rice's bill seemed reasonable. And Keenan Bean's bill seemed high. And you know, that's kind of the extent of the research that I did. Anyone have anything else to add?
Well, I asked the mayor for some information, and the mayor still has not provided this information. I asked over a peacock or so. And I'm hoping that you can provide the information by request.
The request in the email, which I responded to in regards to the-
You said that it doesn't relate. That's not your decision to make as mayor. That is my decision as a board member to say, I want this information, and your job is to provide it, mayor.
Okay.
There's a consistent problem here where the board requests information from you, and you do not provide the information that's requested. Instead, you create a friction between the board, which led to this very lawsuit. Mayor, you should not have sued the board members. There was a disagreement, yes, but disagreements could be resolved by meetings. And I attempted to set up such a meeting, which had you not sued the board, we would have all met and resolved this. Personally, I think you should be liable for all legal fees associated with this bill. You can pay as much as you want, whatever you wish to negotiate with Keenan Bean. But Keenan Bean had a fiduciary responsibility to protect the board. They did not do so. They violated their fiduciary responsibility. They were hired to protect the board and the mayor, and they did not do so. They are therefore in malfeasance of their duties, dereliction of their duties as attorneys of this village. And I think the mayor is responsible. Does anyone on the board agree with me here?
I'm going to say that the mayor was following the advice that he was given. And if I was the mayor, and if I was told that the attorney would be a holdover if you did not have board approval, then I would have acted the way the mayor had acted. But the mayor had gotten bad advice from Keenan Bean. Keenan Bean said that they would be the village attorney as a holdover. And that was incorrect. That was pointed out by trustee Gerard that that was not true. And it turned out that that was not true. So the first domino that was pushed, the domino that led to these crazy bills that the village have to pay, the first domino was bad advice Keenan Bean gave to the mayor. So, you know, I would like you to go back and reexamine your bill. And if you were to resubmit something that was I'd even go a couple times higher than Terry Rice's bill. But not five or six times higher. I would like to resolve this matter and vote to pay the attorneys.
I think a couple times more than Terry Rice is reasonable, given there was more work to be done on Keenan Bean's side. Despite the fact that I think a lot of this was for their own self-interest, but nevertheless, I would agree with you, trustee Barone, that that's probably a reasonable place that I could get to as well.
Okay, so just to go back to trustees Albert's statements, opening statements in regards to the mayor and creating friction and not abiding by or listening to. During the reorganization meeting, three attorneys indicated to this board that they should enter into an executive session to seek remedy of the issue at hand. Three different attorneys. Ralph DiMarco, Lance Klein, Rob Magrino. You all failed to acknowledge that we needed to get into an executive session to remediate this difference.
Mayor, what time did that-
The board, excuse me, I'm sorry. The board failed to listen to three attorneys. The board violated New York State village law. And that was founded by Judge Marks from the Rockland County Supreme Court. We had to engage a defense to protect the villagers suffering, the office of the mayor, and the laws of New York State, which were being violated by the entire board. There is no excuse for that. Terry Rice's behavior as an attorney, he should have been able to acknowledge that at the same time. At the same time, we're talking about paying bills. We're talking about paying bills for Terry Rice, who does not have a binding, valid contract or agreement with this village. You engaged separately with Terry Rice. You each acknowledged receipt of a contract individually, not even as on behalf of the villagers suffering or as a trustee. You signed and acknowledged a bill for $12,900. You want to talk about violations? Continue.
Mayor, I did not sign that contract that you're talking about.
You're right. I'm sorry. Yes.
I just want to be clear. And furthermore, at the December 2 meeting, I did, I did agree to go to an executive session. I did not have support of the board. So I just want to clarify my opinion for yourself and those of you at home.
You are correct.
And this would have been resolved if you didn't turn around and turn this into a lawsuit that is completely unnecessary. And I'm not quite sure why we have to have seven hours, eight hours, five hours of conversation. That's, that just is just not acceptable.
I think it is also fair to point out that Keenan Bean, in a sense, was self-serving here because they had plenty to gain by stretching out, suing the board, and going to an appeal that was unnecessary, and so on and so forth. This only served to increase their ability to bill you, build the village, and you as mayor should be protecting the residents, not protecting Keenan Bean, unless perhaps you have some arrangement. I would like to ask Keenan Bean, have you ever donated any money to any political campaigns here in this village?
Steve, you need to be careful what you're saying because so far you've accused us of malfeasance, which is dead wrong, and it's libelous. You've accused us of self-interest, which is also dead wrong. If you want to keep committing defamation, go right ahead. I'm not going to answer your questions. I'm not here to negotiate. That's not why I'm here. You need to understand, this contract that we had with the mayor is binding. It's valid. The court has said so already.
And does your contract only provide support for the mayor, or with the village, that is, or does it also supposed to support the village board?
Depends on the facts and circumstances that are going on. When trustees won't listen to the advice, they take a risk. That's what happened here. You were all given advice by three different attorneys. You decided as a board, regardless of whether you voted against it or not, the majority ruled. The majority decided not to take the advice and to go down a different path. And I disagree completely, and I don't know how Mr. Barone thinks. He knows what we advised the mayor, but I can assure you, I never advised the mayor that we were a holdover.
I was sitting at the meeting- I was sitting at the, I was sitting at the meeting on December 2nd when the mayor said that I would like a motion to have Keenan Bean, and you know, if my words are not exactly right, I'm not reading it verbatim. I'm giving you the flavor. That he wanted a motion to have Keenan Bean continue as the village attorney. No motion was granted. So he said that they will continue as a holdover, and the Keenan Bean attorney sitting on the dais next to the mayor said that was correct.
That's not what he said. You might want to look at that reporting again. It's very important that you look at that because that is not what he said. That was not at all what he said. So be careful when you say that because you're putting words into the mouth, and now you're accusing us of giving advice that was incorrect.
So in your recollection, what did he say that night?
Ralph didn't say anything about that.
It's part of the problem.
Well, I thought the mayor just said that he advised us not to.
No, that's not what he said.
Didn't you say there was three attorneys?
Three attorneys advised you not to go down the road you had gone down, meaning appointing Terry Rice as the village attorney. That was the advice that you got from three attorneys. We told you, it was very simple. You do not have the authority to appoint the village attorney. Paul told me you didn't have to listen to me. You're right. You don't have to listen to me, but you have to deal with the consequences.
So this is punishment?
No, 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 not at all.
Exactly. The consequences, as though we're children.
No, the consequences were you went down a legal path, and you were incorrect. The only way the mayor could prove that you were incorrect was to go into court. And if you don't think the mayor has the right to go into court to sue the village board-
I think it's a waste of money to do so.
But that's not what you said. You called it malfeasance.
I say it's malfeasance for you to handle the case. I think if the mayor wanted to sue the board-
You're wrong about that too.
I think if the mayor wanted to sue the board, he needed to use out, or you needed to bring on outside counsel.
Then you might want to take a look at the cases that support the mayor's case to bring in action and to use the attorney that he chooses, not who you choose, and not somebody else.
A separate counsel, only for the mayor, not for the village board?
Correct. That is correct.
Let's make that very clear.
Absolutely. And he also has the right to sign a retainer to do that. He does not need the village board to approve that.
Retainer sign?
Yes.
Did we get a copy of that?
I don't know. Did you ask for a copy?
You should have gotten a copy.
No, you should not have gotten a copy because you're not the client.
As the village board, we represent this village. We represent the residents.
So then how do you protect the village and the board and protect the mayor when you're doing this case that only protects the mayor? It's conflict of interest.
I don't agree.
And I go back to my original question. Will you tell us if you've ever made any political donations to board members before?
I've never made any political donations.
Or has your company made any political donations?
My firm has not made any political donations to the mayor.
No, I didn't say to the mayor.
To who?
Board members.
To the current board members?
I didn't say that. I said to board members.
Ever? To board members?
In the last five years. How about that?
I don't know.
I will say that your company has done so, and I have proof of that.
Okay.
And I think that that itself on the surface is very questionable. We'll just say. Believe it at that. Thank you.
That's fine.
I'm not trying to accuse you of anything. I'm not trying to-
Well, certainly you are.
I'm not-
Why would you raise it, Steve?
What I'm saying is I'm not trying to-
Steve, I don't know what you're doing here. You're not raising it for an issue? You're just raising it to raise it?
I'm raising it to raise it. I think it should be noted, that's all. I think it should be noted.
You think that's a violation of privacy?
No. No, I think it should be revealed, though. That's all. I think it's something that-
Was it hidden from people?
Well, I asked a question and you didn't really want to answer that.
Because I don't know the answer to that. Did I sign the check?
I don't know.
How do you not know? You know that we made a donation.
Because it's reported. The donation's reported on the New York State website.
So obviously, we knew it was going to be reported. But you're raising it for no more.
That's fine. Maybe it cast some shadow, that's all.
Okay. You're entitled to your opinion.
Okay, so Lance, I heard you say you're not here to negotiate. So why are you here?
I was asked to come to discuss my bills. If you had questions, that's why. Nobody asked me to negotiate. Is that what you were expecting?
As a matter of fact, yes.
Based on what?
We feel that they're excessive.
Okay, based on what? Looking at Terry Rice's bills? Did you look at the work that Terry Rice did, Steve?
The judge in court, I was in court, sir. The judge even said they were excessive. He used that word.
Oh, God, Steve, you know, you better start telling the truth. You were there, right?
He may have used a slightly different word.
Oh, a different word. So now you're changing-
But it was to the extent of the word excessive. You may not have been that exact word.
Did he say they seemed high?
Essentially.
Ah, that's different than excessive, right? Exceed high might mean, it's a complex case. It needed a lot of work.
And they got hired for something.
And, and the attorneys that you were relying upon were wrong, as it turns out. Remember you said, I go by what Nikon tells me. Nikon didn't, didn't defend you, did it?
Uh, no.
No, they didn't. They gave you advice, and it was bad advice.
No, it's not bad advice.
So you wanted-
We were correct that he could not appoint you. This was the only action we take-
Wait, wait. You were correct that he could not appoint you? You appointed the village attorney. At least you tried to. The mayor said you couldn't. You told me you could. You told me you didn't have to listen to me.
He could not appoint you.
He could appoint me subject to approval. Yes.
You're a firm, and you're a firm located outside of this county. You're not eligible.
Really? And what do you base that on?
The law. That's the foot law.
That's in chapter 300.
You might want to read that law again.
It's very clear about residents. There's a residence requirement.
No, there is no residency requirement. You might want to take a look at that again. You might want to, you might want to speak to an attorney who practices municipal law before you start giving legal advice.
Listen, the bottom line here is, it was a lawsuit. The mayor brought the action against the board. The board was unsuccessful, and the mayor's office was successful. We have outstanding bills here that need to be paid, that will be paid accordingly. If there is any other questions, feel free to ask. This is a long, drawn-out action.
So what you're saying, mayor, is that you don't want to protect the residents of this village from a very high charge? Is that what you're saying? And you don't care, and bringing this case, you don't care that the, that the village residents are each going to have to spend hundreds of dollars because of your action?
The village residents are going to spend this additional $82,000 because this board's action, violating New York State law.
Because you would not be able to-
Listen to me. I am speaking. I'm sorry. You would not listen. This board would not listen to the advice of council. They went down the wrong road. They violated New York State village law. It is here, clear, from Judge Marks, Rockland County Supreme Court. You guys have a copy of it. Read it. Take the advice. I've been here for five years. I've never encountered any, anything like this. You have set this village back not only monetarily, but in our actions. Jeez, a year, two years. We were on a great path of success here in the village of suffering.
Hey, knock it off. Let this bill run off, and you just sit here and say-
You knock it off. I have the floor here. You are at a line.
I'm not at a line.
You are at a line. I am speaking. I have the floor. Pay the bill.
Mayor, why don't you pay the bill?
I don't, I-
I think you should pay the bill. Then you brought the action, you pay the bill.
I think the three other people should pay Terry Rice's bill.
Maybe they should. I'll tell you what, maybe they'll pay that bill if you pay this bill.
Yeah. It's not going to happen.
I'm not saying they will.
It's not going to happen.
You know, I think if you want to run up a bill like this, you ought to think about the cost.
You should have thought about it.
I wasn't involved. I was not- I attended every special meeting with us. Don't tell me- Mayor, I was willing to attend a session, I would be the executive session, and I attended every meeting that you called. I want to be clear about that. You have been argumentative, and you have not been willing to meet with the board in a positive way because-
I called for special meetings. No one attends.
You selected a date that nobody was available to me, and I was there.
You guys have to stop. You have to stop.
I don't think we have to.
Okay. Good. Continue.
But I'm going to locate the resolution.
We'll put this on for another bit.
Well, I have the resolution here, authorizing payment to Keenan Bean for professional services rendered in the representation of mayor Ed Markounis and Markounis Al
Why don't we do this?
P. Gerard, index number 1570 of 2019.
What I would like to propose-
I put, I put forth the motion for the resolution. Do you have a motion?
Not yet. We're still discussing.
Not yet. Oh, we're still discussing. Okay, go ahead. Discuss.
Let me ask you a question, Lance. We all called you and spoke to you about some of these eight-hour, seven-hour phone calls. And to get some more-
Are you saying there's an eight-hour phone call in one day? Is that what you're, because Joe, I don't know what you're looking at.
I'm looking at your bills.
I know, but you-
7.75.
Right.
I'm assuming that's hours-
74 hours, you say? It's just phone calls?
On January 15th, to review, prepare filings, and extended phone calls with, with mayor, and this one does not have the, does not have Amy on it.
So if we're reviewing and preparing, we're not just speaking on the phone?
That reply brief.
I'm speaking now. So you can respect someone else for a change. So for 7.75, I guess that you're preparing. So then the review and the affidavit and the revision is five hours and 25 minutes. And it says extended phone conferences.
So it's two different people, first of all, that you were referring to. So the first one that you're referring to is Jacqueline Goldberg. She reviewed and revised the reply brief. She reviewed and revised Markounis affidavit and the Klein affirmation. She finalized them, and she cared for file. So that means that on January 15th, Jacqueline spent seven and three quarter hours doing that particular work. That's what that entry is. It is not phone calls. I, on the other hand, have five and a quarter hours doing different work. It's my affirmation. I reviewed and revised my affirmation. I also reviewed and revised the mayor's affirmation. I final, I reviewed and finalized the memorandum and the block, and I had telephone, extended telephone conferences with the mayor. All of that was within the 5.25 hours.
So when you say extended phone call, what exactly does extended phone call mean?
Well, that means that I'm on the phone with the mayor for in excess of 30 minutes. And on that occasion, there were various, there were numerous phone calls. Because when we're putting together an affirmation or an affidavit, we speak to the client when we're doing it. It's his affidavit.
Okay, so, mayor, I guess since we didn't ask, I would like the opportunity to review what you have signed with Keenan Bean in regard to this.
The retainers, right?
Sure.
Yep.
So I guess once we get that and we can review that, then we can come back to the table and go over these items.
Sure. That's up to you.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, perfect.
And just so you're aware, I did tell the mayor that if you wanted to negotiate the bill, you could do that with him. Meaning if there's a negotiation to be had. By the way, you knew, Steve, about a month ago, I offered to sit and talk settlement with you and the board.
I was not aware.
I sent you an email.
I must have missed an apology.
Well, I sent it to Terry Rice, and I sent it to you. I would not send it to the individual board members because you were all represented by Terry Rice. So I sent it to Mr. And this is February 6th. I sent him an email indicating that the mayor would be willing to sit and discuss settlement with you. I copied you on the email.
I think there was a misunderstanding because that, the email you described, I recall, the email, I didn't think you were referring to financial settlement because-
Well, I have nothing but a financial case at this point. The mayor has an interest. So my idea, and the mayor's idea, was to sit down and discuss settlement.
Shouldn't it be the mayor's interest to pay the least possible amount?
Well, that's why we offered to settle. It was part of the-
So we'll take those phone conferences. We'll take those. We'll make a meeting for that.
So anyway, I do, I do wish to read and enter into this village meeting this. This is section 3-300 of New York State law on villages. No person shall be eligible to be appointed to or hold any other village office who is not a citizen in the United States, not at least 18 years of age, except as may otherwise be provided by law, is not a village resident. And eligibility of holding such office is subject to regulation under the civil service law or any other law does not meet the requirements of such laws. And then it goes on, and there's some more regulations, and then it actually reduces that threshold and says that a village with a population of less than 3,000, which actually does not apply here, in lieu of any other residency requirement imposed by law, the justice may reside, the town of Village Justice, may reside within a county in which the village is wholly or partially situated. So in other words, basically, the rules can be reduced for certain circumstances. But it does specifically say that, for instance, that the village attorney is supposed to be a resident of the village, as if they're an officer. Now, you weren't an officer, which is why your company was able to do this. But being that you were not an officer is why you could not be a holdover, just to clarify that. Because only officers can be hold-
But what you said was that we had to be a resident, to be village attorney.
But I did, when, when the mayor, the mayor made an attempt to appoint you personally.
That's a different, that's a different issue.
That was an illegal appointment. I just wanted to point that out.
Well, it wasn't illegal because it wasn't carried.
It didn't carry, and it didn't happen because there was no quorum. I understand. But I, I felt offended by that appointment. That's all.
But the point that you made earlier was, and I told you you were wrong, you don't have to be a resident to be village attorney because in this village, the village attorney is a department head, not an officer. We could not take an oath of office. That is 100% correct. We never took an oath of office. We never suggested we would take an oath of office. If you took an oath of office, you would know, and you pointed this out, trustee Barone, then you would be a holdover. That was not our position. I never took that position.
Okay, so once we get the opportunity to see that, and we'll review it and come back, and we will negotiate with the mayor.
And in an attempt to make a speedy resolution of this, you know, I would be willing to vote tonight to pay Terry Rice's full bill and give you double his bill.
And why would I do that? Terry Rice didn't put the work in that we put in, and you don't have an agreement with Terry Rice to pay that. You realize that would be a violation as well.
The only reason we don't have that is because the mayor wouldn't sign it.
No, 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 that's not. You haven't, you haven't done it at a public meeting. You haven't appointed Terry Rice to represent you in any capacity, in any, I've been to all meetings.
You're right. We didn't appoint him. We contracted.
You can't contract him.
For what attorney?
You didn't do that at a public meeting either.
Yes, we did. That was at, that was at the December 2nd meeting.
For village attorney.
You appointed him as village attorney.
We did not appoint him. You, you put this through your entire first case.
Really?
It was that we tried to appoint him. We did not try to appoint him.
Really? So what did the judge rule?
He said we were going to contract him for our village attorney effective January 1st.
And the judge ruled that it was infatual. You violated the law.
Actually, at that point, at that point- At, at, after the first case, he said Terry Rice is the village attorney until, until we make a final ruling.
Do you want to know why you need a village attorney? There is no first case and second case. This is all one case. The initial ruling is what you're trying to, to set forth, was preliminary. That's not a final determination. I think you were waiting for-
No, that's why he only has one bill.
No, but it was preliminary, which means that the judge-
Because as soon as that preliminary date was over-
That means that the judge hadn't ruled yet on a final decision.
That's true.
And now that you got the decision from him, the written decision, he said that your appointment on December 2nd-
Not an appointment.
-violated the law. Whatever you want to call it, it violated the law, which means it was void. You didn't appoint him. You didn't contract. That contract is invalid.
Well, if he says that for that period of time before it was final, the final ruling, that Terry Rice is your attorney?
He didn't say that. No, he did not say that. You need to look at the decision.
Okay, so we'll go back and review everything again. So we're back to- So we're back to square one.
Uh, before you go.
Yeah.
Could you just give me something that I could feel out as to why your bill is six times that of Terry Rice's? What you do six times?
Did you see, did you read the work that Terry Rice did? Did you read his bills?
Yeah.
Did you read our bills?
Yeah.
You didn't see six times the work, the time? This was a pretty complex case, right? I mean, your attorney got it wrong. My com got it wrong. There aren't a lot of cases out there. In fact, Steve, I think you were present when the judge first, when he came out, he said, "This is a pretty interesting case."
He did.
There's not a lot out there like this. Did, did you see the work? This is what Terry Rice submitted to the court, right? This is what we submitted to the court. You want to know why? There's more time, there's more work. It's that simple. And just so you understand, this isn't a, you know, "Well, we think you did two times more work, we're gonna pay you two times." It doesn't work that way. This, this isn't, you know, contracting for asphalt. You can't just pick a number and say, "Well, if you can do a thousand linear feet, it's gonna cost this much, and two thousand, it's gonna cost double." It doesn't work that way. This is professional services. This is why it's not subject to an RFP. Professional services are exempted for a reason. You can't just pick what you can, but you don't have to just pick the lowest bidder, because professional services are exempt. So if you want to know why the bills are, are significantly higher than Terry Rice's bills, you did significantly more work, and we were successful. Not that that matters, by the way. You don't pay based on success, although I imagine some people would like to do that. Um, that's not the way it works. When you sign a retainer, you're signing for advice, and we gave you advice. You may not have liked the advice. Paul suggested he didn't now, but he never did before. Never told me he wasn't happy with Ralph, or me, or Jacqueline, or anybody else.
I wasn't.
He never told anybody.
Told you what?
That you weren't happy with the work.
No, I said I didn't have a problem with the work.
Oh, I thought you said you...
You told that night, when you gave the Mayor bad advice.
Were you giving the Mayor bad advice?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, and the judge seemed to agree with our bad advice, so anyway...
How can it be bad advice? I, I really do. I, it's, and I'm not politicizing anything. How can it be bad advice when the Mayor's office was defending the village and village law and was successful? Do you want to be on a, a winning team, or you want to be on a losing team?
For eighty-five thousand dollars.
So you'd pay, you want to be on the losing team then?
No.
That's what he's saying.
Eighty, eighty-five thousand dollars is excessive for this.
There's, there's no winner, except Keenan Bean, okay? Village loses.
No, no, the village won. The village maintained, the Mayor's office maintains it. Right, and, and the, the board cannot usurp the authority of the Mayor's office.
Are we, are, are we not? Are we, or are we not looking for a new village attorney? Are we, or are we not?
Yes, oh, we are.
Absolutely.
Why's that?
It might be Keenan Bean.
Not for eighty-five thousand, no, Bill.
You, you asked me a question, I'm just answering. Since we're here, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Hey, Mr. Higgins in the hallway.
Okay. I would. I have to say, as a, as a resident here and as a taxpayer, I do feel like Keenan Bean represented us appropriately. I have no problem, I, I know nothing about billable hours or, or how much the total of the bill should be, but I know the three board members here attempted to do something illegal, and it was through the Mayor's actions and Keenan Bean's representation that the village was protected. So personally, I have a problem with Terry Rice's bill. We talk about self-interest and self-serve it. Terry Rice made, that, what was it, twelve thousand dollars that he didn't earn, because he didn't represent me. So I actually came here, I was surprised to hear your comments, saying that you felt that the Mayor should be paying this, because I actually came here with the intent to suggest that the three trustees may rest some sort of restitution to the taxpayers.
Gertrude, just so you know, I want to be clear. I voted against Terry Rice, but I also voted against Keenan Bean for my own reasons. However, having said that, I made plenty of attempts to try and get the Mayor and the board to work this matter out before it went to the litigation point. We would have saved eighty-two thousand dollars plus whatever, had the Mayor been willing to work with the board. That was not the case, though. Instead, when a meeting was set for Saturday morning, December, I don't remember the date.
Twenty.
Fifteenth, twentieth, whatever the day it was. I, I apologize, I don't remember the date. We had a meeting set, it was very difficult to get the meeting set, because there was some problems, uh, with, with, with the, uh, village clerk agreeing to, to notice the meeting. However, once this meeting was noticed, within a day or two of that, the Mayor brought the lawsuit.
Day before.
The day before. So to me, that's disingenuous. If the Mayor wanted to work this out and avoid charging you as a taxpayer with the cost, he would have, he would have not sued the board right away, he would have come to the meeting and said, "Do you have something on the table?" But no, he decided, "I'm gonna reward my friend, Keenan Bean." That's how I see it, Mayor.
That's not how I see it as a taxpayer.
Well, it's your money, you can see it in your mind.
When we called the meetings, numerous times, when meetings were called and no one attended the meetings, when we were advised to go into an executive session numerous times, meetings where trustees did not show up, other trustees other than yourself, who called the meeting...
Deliberately scheduled it.
Excuse me, once again, once again, excuse me.
They used fabricated stories.
I'm like, "Oh, gee."
You deliberately scheduled it on a day you knew we couldn't attend.
No, listen to me. You, you guys made the meeting that you did not attend, you called them, it was...
Steve just explained what that is.
Let me finish with, Steve, Steve, the notice you're speaking of was improperly noticed. You know that the notice was improper. You know the notice was sent back to you with corrections.
And I fixed it immediately, but that was three days later. It was one of those...
With corrections. The, the, the public needs to know.
Correct.
That still, you were not following proper direction and protocol. But you did not attend the meeting, and the meeting was not properly noticed, the advice from the attorneys was disregarded, there was no other alternative. I am sorry.
Will you agree, Mayor?
Go ahead.
That had you been willing to work with the board, we would have been able to resolve the problem without the cost of the attorneys?
If the board would have showed up at meetings?
If the board, how about if you had showed up without, without suing the board on December twenty-first or whatever?
If the board, if the board would have listened to the advice of attorneys during reorganization, we would never be in this position.
So you feel it's okay to spend any amount of this money?
That is on the board.
You feel it's okay to spend any amount of money instead of trying to work things out?
He won't, he won't answer that question.
He won't. And he won't provide information when I ask for information.
So you, you feel, you feel like you can pay another attorney... You can pay another attorney without a contract?
I didn't agree to that. I just want to say, I didn't agree to that.
Okay, so do you agree with paying Terry Rice?
That, that matters, I'm, it's not something I'm talking about right now.
But I'm asking you a question.
I'm telling you that I didn't sign that contract, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna talk about that contract, because I'm, my name's not on it.
Okay, that's fair.
That, my name is not on it, I have nothing to do with it. And I did not vote for, for that.
But you do represent the people.
I do represent the people, and my goal is to pay as little money as possible out of village coffers for needless wasteful things. To me, this was a needless wasteful thing.
Which you...
That could have been worked out if you were willing.
Which the attorneys indicated that you will be paying two separate attorneys on reorganize, when they told you, you're going down the wrong path.
Okay, so, back to the subject at hand.
Go ahead.
We will get the retainer, we will review it, we will talk to the Mayor, and we will get back to everyone.
Joe, I have a question. This has been pending for quite some time now. I feel like every meeting that I've attended, everything just gets postponed further and further. Why is there never a resolution on anything? Why do none of you come in here? Why do none of you... Excuse me. Why do none of you ever seem to come in here prepared to discuss what the meeting was called for?
Well, we never got a copy of the retainer, so now we realize that...
And you didn't think to ask for it?
Well, I would think that as the Mayor should share with the board, but he doesn't share with the board, and everything is kept in the quiet, and nothing is ever shared, so therefore...
Well, if you'd like to talk about not sharing information, I think you should look at some of your fellow trustees that aren't sharing with the public.
And we've been pretty open.
For the record, this drop...
I don't think you've been pretty open with the, the initial hiring of Terry Rice and the, and what was going on behind the scenes, the, uh, breaking of the open meetings law, the negotiation, excuse me, the negotiation of some type of contract individually outside of a meeting, the execution of a contract, or the, the, the appointment of a, a contract springing in on the Mayor. Let's talk about transparency. Let's continue.
Mayor, I...
We all attended the reorg meeting, and you dropped the bomb of a contract to appoint a village attorney, which you tried to do, and you were unsuccessful, and according to the Supreme Court, once again, failed. You usurped the Mayor's authority and broke New York State village law.
Mayor, at the February board meeting, that was, I believe, if, if my dates are correct, it was, I believe, before the judge reversed his preliminary, uh, opinion on the case. At that point in time, um, Keenan Bean was not yet able to build for the village work, okay? I asked you at that meeting, you had said, made, you implied that you had gotten some legal work from Keenan Bean, and, and you were very cagey about it when I asked you about it, and then, when you wouldn't quite read an exact, or answer my exact question, I read a phrase from the New York State law that I wanted to get on the, uh, on the, uh, minutes of that meeting. I, I don't remember the exact phrase, but I read it from, from the law book, uh, that basically pointed out that, um, you know, if, if any member of a governing body knowingly hires or, you know, contracts out or hires whatever without the approval of the board, without a majority approval, that they were personally responsible. It was something to that effect. I don't remember the exact phrase. The point is, at that point, if you indeed had this, this agreement with Keenan Bean that was subsequently granted or whatever by the court, you should have revealed that in front of the public. That's the time you should have handed out this, this material that, that Joe Corrigan is asking for.
The retainer agreement.
Retainer agreement. Because you did not acknowledge directly. You kind of hinted, "Yeah, I got something, something." You know, you wouldn't quite answer the question.
I don't know about the something, something, but I don't recall the question anyway, but you were all quite aware when we were standing in Supreme Court, you were there.
I was there.
Who was there with me?
I, I was there, you were there, and, and, uh, and Keenan Bean was there, both, both the representatives that are here tonight.
Yeah.
But, uh, the retainer agreement going forward, in fact, when I was at court in December, the judge specifically, at that time, specifically said the words, uh, that, that, you know, the, because, because I believe Jacqueline, uh, Ms. Gold, Goldberg, Goldberg? Yeah, I apologize. Um, said something to the effect of, "Well, who's gonna pay for our services into January if we end on December thirty-first?" And the judge said, "Well, I guess you better decide if this is worth your while." Okay? In other words, basically, the judge at that point was acknowledging you were not gonna get paid after December thirty-first, and that it was on you if you want to continue the case. Is that correct? Is that a valid description of what the judge said? Maybe not the exact words, but the intent of what he said.
Well, the judge had, um, more specifically said whether we are successful in overturning the prior resolution and that we take the chance by going forward.
Right, but, but he thought there was a chance you wouldn't get paid, period. Yes?
Under the facts, as he understood the questions via the time prior to briefing the actual issue, but throughout the case, the issue changed.
Yes, I agree. It did change at the end, and I believe it was subsequent, it was after the, uh, meeting where I read the phrase that I read at the meeting. But my point, my point is, there was a lot of secrecy on your side too, Mayor, so don't just say it was whatever.
Steve, just so you understand where even the Mayor was coming from, I, I told you last time you asked me, "Are you getting paid?", and I said, "Yes, we are."
You did, you did. I asked you in the hallway.
And I mentioned the case.
Yes.
You know, judges don't necessarily have all of the law in front of them at the time that you're arguing one particular point. So when we, I, I remember exactly the, the point you're referring to, when the judge said, "You pay the risk."
Yeah.
Right? I'm certain he was not aware of the case that we had, called Con versus the Town of Huntington, and that's the one where it says that an individual board member, despite the language in the statute, an individual board member can bring an action on his or her own, without a majority, when the board is doing something deemed to be improper or illegal. Because otherwise, if you think about that, a single board member could witness the majority do illegal things and do nothing about it. So when you read the law, and you did, you read it, and I remember the section, and I remember, you asked everybody if they consented, and each one went down the line, everybody said, "Yeah, I consent."
Yeah.
So I remember exactly what you're talking about, and that's fine. You're reading the law, but you also need to know the interpretation of the law, just like the village attorney doesn't have to be a resident. If you're an officer, you do. If you're not an officer, you don't. So when you're reading the law, you're getting a piece of it, and then you need to find out how it's been interpreted, and that's what the cases do. So the case that I referred to talks about that specific statute and what the Court of Appeals, which is the highest court in New York, said, the Mayor or any individual trustee has implied authority to hire, notwithstanding that language that says, "No, you can't." So it's important, and this is why, you know, we keep stressing, you can read the law, and that's great, but if you can't read the interpretation because you don't have that uptakeability, you don't have Lexis or Westlaw, and this is not what you do for a living, you need to rely on someone who does. And so you get into something like that, and you say, "Yeah, Mayor, you can't do that on your own, but in certain circumstances, you can, or you can, or any individual." It's just the exception, not the rule. So that's what, you know, I don't think the Mayor was prepared at that meeting to hand out a, a retainer when it wasn't really an issue at the time. It was raised because you raised it.
Yes.
You read the law. But I don't think he kept it in his back pocket and said, "Oh, by the way, here's the retainer that I signed." It wasn't an issue.
But it could have been presented to the board after the fact.
And I mentioned that he, he retained us. This is not the first time, to not be, I've mentioned that he retained us for representation in that matter, and it was unfortunate. It was not something the Mayor wanted to do, but he felt he had no choice at that point. So, you know, again, we are willing to compromise, but...
To what extent?
A significant extent, but it's not something worth for the Mayor to do that. I said to you, "I'm willing to compromise my bill."
Okay.
I am. But then, I don't want anything in return. If you don't want me to be village attorney, I don't want to be here. I don't want people who look at me like, "I don't want his advice, it's no good," or "I don't like it," or "I don't like him." The Mayor has to be comfortable. The whole reason why the Mayor appoints subject to board approval is because the Mayor's the one who works with the attorney. How often have you and I worked together?
Very rarely.
And, and that's normal, because there, it's rare that a village attorney works with trustees, works with the Mayor a lot. So talk to the Mayor, just like I offered the settlement in February. Talk to the Mayor, try and work out, and we'll be flexible, we'll be significantly flexible.
That's great news.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's very great news.
Last thing, just, just...
The village current with you on all other payments?
On the general counsel, yes.
Perfect.
Yes, it is.
And just to bring to the attention of, of the public here also is that Keenan Bean has been, uh, since they represented the village in February, never lost a case, and since they were labor counsel for twenty-something years, never lost a case. I don't think they ever lost a case.
Well, if we have a bad case, we recommend a settlement. It's no secret. I mean, that's just the way it works. Not every fat pattern is in your favor.
And I know that the, the department heads here in the village suffering have expressed to me that they, the desire to retain Keenan Bean as labor counsel, and that they provide great services to the village, to the, to the residents, and to, to the staff.
I have one more thing, two more things actually to say. As a resident, I'm concerned that Terry Rice led at least three, if not four of you, down a path that apparently was illegal. And I'm having a hard time justifying why I should pay for illegal advice.
So am I.
I don't know if you convinced him to go that route, talk about self-interest, or if he gave you, talked about bad advice. If he gave you bad advice and figured he could pull one over on the rest of the village, but I have a real problem paying his bill. He was doing, as an attorney, he has an obligation to the, he was representing himself, claiming to be village attorney, and beyond that, he's an, just an attorney, and he has a legal obligation to uphold the law. And here he was encouraging you to do something illegal. So I'm, A, a problem paying that bill, but I have a problem with the trustees not having some sort of consequences for the, for what they tried to do to the village. I know at the February meeting, there were a number of residents who mentioned that the trustees should be resigning for their actions. I don't know that they ever responded to that.
I will not resign.
I will not either.
So you're okay with just doing, can we expect that there'll be more illegal actions going forward, or, you know, we'll just flip the bill for it? You're okay with that?
Gertrude, as Lance said, it's a complex case, so...
It is a complex case, and I have a question. My next question was for you, Paul. You've been very quiet during the whole conversation about transparency. You've been very quiet during the whole conversation about transparency. Do you want to shed some light on your transparency in all this?
What about?
A lot of questions were asked of you at the January meeting. We still don't have answers.
I don't know what you mean by what I have an answer.
So, you've turned over all your records regarding the village attorney to the village?
I responded to the floor.
You did respond to the floor.
Mm.
Okay, then I'm assuming I'll get an answer to that. I hope it's complete. Steve, one other question for you. And I'm not sure where you fall in all of this. I know you've been saying that you are not on the side of the trustees, but I feel like you flip lot.
Okay, so I will clarify that.
Please do.
As a trustee, I'm, essentially, it's this, there's an executive branch of government and a legislative branch of government in the village. Okay, it's just the way it works, state law. As part of the legislative branch of government, I am a trustee, and therefore, I have to do a duty as a trustee. I'm not only executive, I'm not the executive branch or the legislative branch. So, therefore, I will have allegiance, if you will, as, you know, as a legislator, as whatever you want to call that, as a part of the legislative branch. Having said that, as everyone on the board knows, I was not in favor of hiring Terry Rice. I did not know that the other members of the board had made a contract with Terry Rice prior to the December second meeting. That came as a complete surprise to me, and if you watch the videotape of the December second meeting-
Where, absolutely.
I voted no.
Absolutely.
So, I want to be clear, as completely transparent, clear as I can be. So, my, basically, my interest is the residents of the village and the cost of services to the residents of the village. I do feel that this case could have been worked out without the use of attorneys. That's my opinion, and I have a right to my opinion. Maybe I'm wrong. You probably think I'm wrong because you said I'm wrong. But I think it could have been worked out amicably if we were all willing to have the meeting that I set up. I made a meeting on a particular date that basically, instead, the day before, we were all served summons to-
Keep going, sir.
I was served, not as a defendant, I was served as an interested party, because, again, I'm part of this legislative branch of the village government. So, I was notified, and I was served by a process server knocked on my door and came to my house.
Yeah.
So, I was served, and I showed up in court the next morning, even though I had no expectation that I needed to do that. It was very short notice, but I did, because I felt it was my duty as a trustee to be in court because I was served. So, I want to be clear about this. My interest is completely in doing my duty as a trustee, as part of the legislative branch of this government. Having said that, I was not in favor of Terry Rice. I was in favor of changing legal services. However, I do not wish to go about it in the direction that the rest of the court did.
That's interesting, though, Steve, that you made those statements, because when we were in court, in Supreme Court, you stood Terry Rice's side.
I did not. I stood between you and Terry Rice, actually.
Right next to Terry.
I was in the middle. And I actually said, the judge said, "Which side are you on?" I said, "I'm on neither side. I'm Switzerland here." I said, "He doesn't represent me, and neither do they." And that's why there was a discussion of who would serve me for the next summons, because I was not being represented by either attorney. I want to be clear about that. I appeared in court on my own recognizance. I was not represented by either attorney in court, just to be clear, 100% clear.
So, how do you foresee this would have gotten resolved?
I believe that we could have worked this out together, by meeting, which we never did.
And yet, the three trustees weren't willing to be.
They were.
That is not true.
They were.
I didn't see what that meeting was about.
Ask Switzerland what happened.
Gertrude, two things happened. Number one, the mayor offered three dates to have a meeting, initially. This was, I think, around the thirteenth of December. The mayor offered three dates surrounding that date. I was available for, I believe, two of them, and not the third, but unfortunately, the other trustees were only available for the third. I offered to call in for the date that I was not available. The other three trustees would have been there, we all could have discussed, spoke, whatever. However, instead, the mayor scheduled it for the date that only I was available, even though he knew that that date only I was available. That, to me, is not the way you meet with somebody, to basically pick a date that nobody can show up because they have other obligations, on short notice, whatever the case may be. Then, subsequent to that, the following weekend, I tried to set up a meeting of my own. Again, I met some resistance. There was a mistake in my initial request. I admit that I don't have experience calling meetings. That was the very first time I've ever called a meeting. So, there were some deficiencies in my form that I used. After about two or three days, it was returned to me, "Fix this, and then we'll do this." Okay, so I immediately fixed it and returned it back. It didn't have to take as long as it did to get to that point. Basically, to reach a point where I could call a meeting was very difficult. So, okay, the meeting was called, and the day before the meeting, I was served papers. So, how do you think the board felt, you know, are we going to try and work with the mayor?
That would make me even more anxious to work with him in his office.
Well, not if you have to, not if you have to appear in court the day before, you know? The point is, so, in other words, the day before the meeting was the court date. So, I did show up. I showed up both to the court date and the-
But you showed up knowing that there would be no meeting. Why did you not alert the public that there would be, or the mayor?
It was at like midnight the night before that I-
You were, you were in court the night before?
No, that's when I spoke to the other trustees, individually.
So, you decided to cancel the meeting?
I didn't cancel the meeting, I'm going to be clear.
All right, well, you were there, so-
But you knew the result would be that it was canceled, sorry, Mayor, I didn't mean that.
Upon discussion with the trustees.
Well, I knew there were-
They decided, once again, outside of a meeting, to not come to a meeting.
But will you agree, if you had not sued them, that they would have showed up?
They should have come to the meeting! Are you kidding? You called the meeting. They should have attended the meeting.
You all got the residents here.
And then either went silent, or said, "Mayor, I understand, you're bringing us into court. I feel there's no need for the meeting," boom. There were public, there were residents at that meeting. You were there.
I was there.
The residents were outraged. You called the meeting, everybody was supposed to be there.
Was every resident outraged?
Every resident I spoke to was-
I believe one of them spoke at that meeting, and he's on video speaking at that meeting, kind of contradicting you at that meeting, but that's okay. I'm not-
Where's he been since?
Well, I'll tell you, I was at the meeting, and I was outraged, if that's what you want to hear.
That's what we would like to hear.
Yeah, I mean, how ridiculous if they called the meeting, we show up, and then, you know, nobody shows up. You know, if we think that the board is going in the right direction, is there a penalty for breaking the law?
Yeah.
I honestly, I'm not.
Thank you.
Well, you're Switzerland, what's your opinion then?
I feel that this could have been avoided. How's that?
Well, no, that's not the question.
I feel this could have been avoided.
But that's not the question. Do you think there should be a penalty for breaking the law?
I'm not an attorney, so I don't know.
I'm asking you your opinion. I know you're not a lawyer. I know that.
We've established that.
Yes, we've established that nobody up there is a lawyer, right? Because we had to go to court for breaking the law. You broke the law, you cost us a hundred grand.
Okay, I didn't break the law myself.
Well, I know, you're Switzerland, you don't want to make a decision either way. You're like floating over the place.
I made, I made-
So, what's your decision?
I made a decision.
Do you have opinions, right? You give them. So, do you have an opinion, should there be a penalty for breaking the law? It's a simple question. If I break the law, I know there's a penalty.
I guess the question is, was the law actually broken? That would be the question.
Are we, I don't know if the bills are-
I don't know that we're here to discuss that.
At this point, I feel that this side of the table has actually taken some initiative, and they're like, "Listen, we're going to get the paperwork that we need, we're going to review it, and we're going to move forward." This pointing fingers is, I'm sorry, it's pissing me off. Stop with it. You got the court order, they already did it, it's done, it moves forward now. Put aside the goddamn differences and run the village. Or is we're going to be, we're going to run the goddamn village right into the ground, and I'm going to sell my frickin' house? And I'm going to take my one-year-old son, and I'm going to move to Pennsylvania,